The June 11th, 2015 Longview City Council Meeting is now called to order. The pledge and the prayer will be held today, led today by Pastor Ronald G. Witcher of the Heartland Baptist Church. Please rise.
Let us bow for prayer, please. Our heavenly Father, we thank you most of all for saving us and keeping us, keeping us safe through another day. We thank you for the privilege of living here in Longview, and we thank you for all that we have here. I want to pray a special blessing, not only upon this meeting tonight, but we pray a blessing upon our city. We pray for the crime and all the other things that's going on and the need of so many people. We pray for wisdom as these, as our mayor and city councilman leader of the city. We pray that most of all that we might honor you, that we might help others in time of need, that we might be open not only in what we think, but open our eyes and our hearts to those in need. Thank you for your blessings, and thank you for America. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to have an employee recognition, if you would. As you all know, this year Texas has experienced major rainfall and flooding. What you may not know is that the Longview Fire Department Water Rescue Team was called into action to assist the flood relief efforts as members of Texas Task Force One. These firefighters played a direct role in several flooding victim rescues in Lufkin, Huntsville, and Washington County. Furthermore, the Texas Department of Emergency Management noted that the Longview team was second to none and should be commended for their servant hood, demeanor, character, and work ethic. I would like to ask Chief Steelman to come up, please.
Mayor, Council, Mr. Willard, thanks for giving us a few minutes to recognize these members of our water rescue team for their outstanding work that they participated in with the Texas floods recently. And in lieu of that, I'd like to recognize them with a unit citation award, and I'll read that to you briefly. The Longview Fire Department takes great pleasure in recognizing with pride and admiration the water rescue team for their outstanding representation of the Longview Fire Department in the participation during the spring 2015 Texas flooding event. Thank you for helping in victim rescues and recoveries primarily in the Lufkin, Huntsville, and Washington County areas, and for showing professional levels of servant hood, character, and work ethic as representatives of the city of Longview. These men gave up about 21 days of their lives to go down and help out other fellow Texans, and they did admirable. So I'd like to recognize them for that. Just real quick, I'd like to introduce the ones that are here. We actually had nine people get deployed, and this is six of those nine. First, I have Captain Tommy Daniels, firefighter paramedic Cliff Patrick, firefighter paramedic Chris McGuinness, firefighter paramedic Tim Clanton, Captain Steve Dankers, Captain Josh Tanner. And the three that couldn't be here with us tonight are Lieutenant Leon Smires, help me, fire driver Brian Vickery, and fire driver Jason Davis. So, thank you for giving us this time.
Guys, I want to thank you all for representing our city with dignity, with respect, and with compassion for other people. And I appreciate what you do. Thank you for not only working here in our community, but in communities abroad where we do make a difference, and it's a great show for Longview. Thank you so much. Okay, we're to citizen comment in the agenda. We have a number of speaker cards tonight. I will ask you to please adhere to the rules of our conduct. If you're speaking on behalf of an agenda item, you'll have six minutes to speak. If you're speaking on behalf of an item that's not on the agenda, you'll have three minutes to speak. And we will hold the time based on the little device right there, and when the buzzer goes off, I ask that you please, please stop. Please use rules of decorum, and we look forward to your comments. My first speaker card is Joel Heflin. I have Joel and Michelle. Are y'all speaking together? Thank you.
First, I want to thank you all for giving us the time to speak today. As a lifelong East Texan, as a father, a husband, a business owner in the community, as a graduate of East Texas Baptist University with a degree in religion, I'm excited to see Longview growing, thriving as an inclusive community. And I wanted to thank you, Mayor Mack, for signing this LGBT Pride Month proclamation. It makes me proud to live in a community where we are accepting and we are willing to be that kind of community, to reach out and to accept everyone.
Normally, you don't have to go in front of your peers to let the mayor know that you didn't vote for him, but you gained so much respect the minute that you signed that and included all members of the community that are contributing and that are thriving and making Longview the place that we're all excited to live.
Thank you, both.
The message of love and compassion, justice and peace are at the very core of the life and ministry of Jesus. We as Christians try to embrace that message in every part of our lives, in private and family life, in public life, in political commitment, at work and at play. And we know that families matter, and we arrive in all kinds of family configurations. The important thing is to take Jesus' teachings home to our partners and spouses, our small children and growing teens. The important thing is to build our families around love and compassion. Diversity is a gift, and a gift that we should celebrate. Gay people are not some abstract thought. Gay people are not strangers with whom you never interact. We are your teachers, your police officers, your social workers, your doctors, your attorneys, your daughters, your brothers, your neighbors, and friends. And we raise our families just like you raise yours. We coach our kids Little League teams, we volunteer time with charities, and we attend church. Most of the time, you probably don't even know that we're there, and you probably forget that we're children of God too. You forget that we are sitting at the end of that church pew with you, or maybe you just never realize that we're a part of your world. The miracle is that God takes our many strands, our many colors, and our many ways of loving, and He weaves them into a single community of light. And this month, Longview has a unique opportunity to be a source of light, not only for the LGBT community, but for our diverse straight population as well. According to the CDC, gay and bisexual youth are four times more likely to attempt suicide than their straight peers. And the Family Acceptance Project found that gay youth who come from families and communities that are highly rejecting of them are eight times more likely to attempt suicide than gay youth from families and communities with little or no rejection. Suicide attempts are twice as high if you are a youth of color. The Pride Proclamation and the Pride Festival might not seem like a lot to some people here today, but it can be a world of difference to a young person who is feeling rejected. It shows that the community of Longview acknowledges that they are people deserving of love and validation. So I would like to thank you, Mayor, for being a man of integrity and realizing that the future of our youth is more important than the political differences and denominational divides among us. And I would like to thank Longview for being a beacon of hope and celebration of diversity in East Texas this June.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Jennifer Benfield.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer Benfield, and I want to preface this with a sincere thank you to our mayor, Andy Mack. Thank you so much for the Pride Month proclamation and for supporting all members of the community. I came here today to share a story that began with a text that said, "I love you." That was the last text I ever got from him. His name was Nick, and he was my best friend. He also happened to be gay. Throughout high school, I witnessed him being bullied between classes. I watched as his self-esteem plummeted. Although he never truly learned to love himself, we loved each other very much. "I love you." I can still remember smiling when I saw that text sitting in chemistry class. "I love you more," I responded. "I don't know if you ever read it, and now it's too late." He hung himself that day. While it's too late to make what happened to Nick right, it's not too late for the city. According to the CDC, LGBT youth are four times more likely to attempt suicide as their straight peers. If we keep shunning the pride community, we are potentially damaging some of the youth in the community. In the letter Nick left behind for those who loved him, he didn't blame bullying. But I believe if he had lived in a more accepting community, the outcome may have been different, and now we have a chance to change it. Each episode of LGBT victimization increases the likelihood of self-harming behavior by 2.5 times on average. It's time to stop rejecting members of this community. I'm not asking you to agree with the way people live their lives. I'm just urging you to allow them to live their lives and feel safe, respected, and accepted in Longview. To all of the people in this room and in this city, regardless of sexual orientation, relationship status, race, age, or anything, I love you.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations on getting the mayorship. I want to come up and just thank you for being courageous enough to issue the proclamation that you issued. Your predecessor wrote a letter. That was a step. You issued a proclamation. That was a gigantic leap, and I commend you for your bravery. I know that you probably have reservations about the mission of the Pride Fest, but if you come to it and if you see what goes on there, you will not have any choice but to have a good time. I went to the first one. I enjoyed it. I'm going to the second one. I plan on enjoying it, and I hope that this shows a lot of people in Texas and throughout the United States that we can do better than just hate people because they're different. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Stewart, come on in, sir. Three minutes, sir. Unless you're speaking on an agenda item, then you have six minutes.
I'm just gonna tell y'all something. I ain't gonna speak on it. Y'all are new. You've already contracted the disease. Sidney's had it a long time. You'll find out what it is before it's over with. There is no worse tyranny than to force a man to pay for what he does not want merely because you think it would be good for him. I hope you all remember that when you start throwing money around. There's a lot of things that have been going on that is tyranny. One of the things I've got, though, I'd like to know when the street department is gonna fix all the manhole covers. If they're not gonna do it, better get rid of them. Get somebody new. It's getting bad out there. Maybe you all don't drive in Longview like I do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
I want to thank Mayor Andy Mack for issuing the LGBT Pride Proclamation. I'm glad I am part of a community where diversity is respected and celebrated. It gives me hope for the future of this community when people with different viewpoints, different customs, different religions, different music can come together, as we are in this meeting, and express themselves without rancor and be heard. We will learn about each other by what we say and do, and then be able to appreciate our differences. I admire and appreciate what Longview is doing to make sure no one's legal rights are trampled on, and that everyone gets a chance to express themselves and participate in community events. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to come here and speak. I come here to express my respectful disagreement with the proclamation that was made and to say that I think that it represents a lack of compassion upon the LBGT community as well as our children. I think there's a reason that the suicide rates are higher in a community that is in bondage to sin. And even as a majority may believe that preferences or proclivities would define right and wrong, I think as a Christian, our mayor should get his determination of right and wrong from what God says. And so while we welcome and love all our LBGT brethren and would invite them to come and serve the living God with us, I cannot agree with the statement. I think that it has a lack of compassion as well upon our children that a support of this type increases the likelihood of more people being of the opinion that it's okay for children to grow up without a mother and a father. So I think that's a lack of compassion upon the children that are yet to come. But I believe that it's a lack of compassion as well upon existing children who may increasingly struggle with their gender identity. And with that in view, I can, very close to home, call to mind an example that even in the last week, I have been in touch with a pastor of one of our congregations who has a 16-year-old male who has been to counseling and is, has been struggling, but now is convinced that he was created as a mistake and that that needs to be corrected by surgery to remove his male genitalia. And so, to support the corruption of truth, I believe, is affecting lives and is a lack of compassion upon many people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sean Whited?
Whited.
Whited? I'm sorry, sir.
First, I would just like to thank you all and all that you do. And I know that it's difficult sometimes to please everybody, but I would like to thank you for the GLBTQ proclamation and for allowing us to have the pride this Saturday. And it's such an honor for us to be able to have that, and it's something that, you know, people have been striving for for years. And to have a dynamic and vibrant gay community that we do have here in Longview, I speak on behalf of all of us and tell you thank you for all that you do for us. And thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, Council, Mr. Willard. My name is Jeremiah Hunter, and I stand here to express extreme disappointment with this LGBT proclamation. This proclamation is not representative of the people of Longview. I understand that it's been tried to be framed that way, and that Mayor Mack, you have tried to say that you issued it in order to represent all of Longview. I want to assure you, this proclamation does not represent all of Longview. It is a small slice of our community, and I want to remind you that there's a difference between tolerance and acceptance. They are separate things. Tolerance, yes, we are supposed to. We do have freedom of expression, freedom of religion, and most importantly, freedom of thought here in this country. But we are not commanded to accept and promote someone or an idea that disagrees with us. That's pretty much all I have to say. I do want to make it clear for the record that I do not think that it was wrong to issue a parade permit, because yes, that is their right, that community's right, to have that form of expression. We do have that in this country. I and most people I know would not advocate for saying, "No, you can't do that." But there's a big difference between doing that and actually issuing a proclamation, which is a promotion of their activity, not just saying, "Okay, yes, you can do that in our city." So, that's pretty much what I had to say. There's a million things I could say, but because I only have three minutes and I want to be respectful of the time, that's what I wanted to focus on. Again, there's a difference between tolerance and acceptance. And there's a difference between issuing a parade permit and actually going the next step, which is a proclamation, which is a promotion of a certain idea or group of people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Skye Mitchell.
I already did it.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you. You gonna do it again?
No.
I'm sorry about that.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here this evening also to speak about the Pride Proclamation. I want to voice my support for the mayor in issuing the proclamation. I do so as a member of this community. For many years, I was born and raised in East Texas. I've spent several years in Longview. I love it here. I have a daughter that I'm raising here in Pine Tree Schools and just finished the seventh grade. And I also express my support as a Christian. I've been a Christian for more than 30 years, grew up in Baptist churches in East Texas. And I know that often it's difficult for us to find a balance between one side or the other, but I think it's very important that we all realize that Christians don't fall wholly on one side or the other of this issue. I also appreciate the responsibility that you all have as civic leaders to balance your civic responsibilities with your convictions of faith. And as a Christian, I support, Mr. Mayor, your decision to issue the proclamation, because it, to me, represents the best of American principles and the best of Christian principles, to say that we will respect and honor those even that we disagree with, and let them have their time and their place, and we will even encourage them. I think it's easy for us to find areas where we disagree and to focus on that, but I hope that as Christians, as East Texans, that we would rise above to the greater challenge to find those areas where we have more in common than we differ, because I think that ultimately is true. And when I think about all the things that have been said by Christians on one side or the other, or anyone else, I'm often reminded lately of the words to Jesus when He said, "Woe to you, scribes and Pharisees, hypocrites, for you tithe mint and dill and cumin, and have neglected the weightier provisions of the law, justice, and mercy and faithfulness." As a Christian, I thank you, Mr. Mayor, for not neglecting the weightier matters of justice and faithfulness. Not only am I a Christian who supports the proclamation, I stand before you as a member of the LGBT community of Longview as well. I am both a Christian and a gay man. I realize that's hard for some people to accept, but there are more of us than you would believe, and the numbers are growing. I've not always been able to say that I was a proud member of that community and both a Christian and a gay man. I remember growing up, hearing the voices of discontent and shame, and sometimes even hatred and fear coming from the leaders that I admired and the people that were around me. And it was a tough journey, and for many people in our community, that journey does not have a happy ending. It's my hope and desire that young people and LGBT people will hear messages of respect, regardless of whether we agree or disagree with one another, that add value to their lives, so that perhaps they will be inspired to know that they do still matter regardless of what someone else says about them. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Let's take a break.
I would just like to thank you for listening to our concerns and our questions about Paula Martin Jones. So far, we're very happy with the results. Once they get started, and there may be more questions, but right now, I'm happy. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're on a roll.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank you Mayor Mack and the Council for retaining ownership of Paula Martin Jones in support of the city of Longview and the community. I am here to ask acceptance of the petitions on file collected by members and supporters of the Friends of Paula Martin Recreation Center. Although we understand that the situation which triggered this initiative has been settled for now, we believe it is important for Longview city leaders to see the level of support the city-owned recreation center has. We hope that you will remember this set of petitions whenever you consider matters involving the city's adult and family recreation programs in the future, particularly the programs taking place at Paula Martin Jones Recreation Center. Although most of the comments made by supporters in recent weeks came from people involved in water aerobics and others interested in the swimming pool, please note that many of the petition signers are patrons who use the facilities and partake in programs that utilize the gym, the weight room, and the exercise equipment at the center. We request that the city staff keep this set of petitions on file for future reference if issues concerning the future of Paula Martin Jones Recreation Center arise in the future. Sincerely, Friends of Paula Martin Jones, Marjorie Latersky, Barbara McDaniel, Marsha Johnson. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mayor and Council, I am excited when I hear people talking about Scripture and discussing it. As a minister of the gospel, tonight I come to you as an individual, though I do not represent a church or an institution. My concern, as I've heard some of these discussions, is a bit of distortion on various fronts, and we'd have to deal with that at another time. My advice, as I've been looking at the various comments, is probably time to tap the brakes on various fronts here. We've got different groups who are drawing different conclusions as we think through this issue. I'm concerned that it's taken this much of your time to have to hear this kind of discussion over and over again. There are other issues that the city has before it. I would encourage you as a council, I encourage you as a mayor, our proclamation's something that are a positive thing for our community. Is this something that we need to continue to do? Or would we be best left to allow you to write a letter, a personal letter, if you want to say thank you or to recognize if somebody's 90th birthday? But all that aside, a couple of things I'll leave you with. We need to be very careful with the word "hate." I've seen that constantly. This person has a different viewpoint, so therefore they hate this group, they hate that group. That needs to stop. I would encourage that to stop, and I don't think I'm powerful enough to make that happen tonight, but I would encourage people at least think about that prayerfully. But I would also, as I conclude with my thoughts as well, is I would let you know that I support you. Mayor, I support Mayor, I support you, and as you work with legal counsel in these matters, I trust you. And I trust you, as you get the wisdom of these council members, to make the best decisions for us as the elected body of the government and our community, and I'm grateful for you, and I pray for you daily.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Vic Burma?
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council. First, I want to say proclamations do matter. They matter to the communities that get them. So this is a third proclamation that I've worked on with the city, so I want to make that really clear. I want to start, I'm president of P-Flag Longview. I wanted to start, and I know many have, but I can't do it enough, wanted to thank Mayor Mack for the first-ever proclamation, LGBT Pride Month proclamation here in Longview. We're really excited to receive it. I know for a lot of groups, it may not be that big a deal. It may just be one thing that they do, but for us, having been rejected once before, we don't take it for granted. Okay? So, we've expanded our Pride Month activities not beyond the Pride Festival. After this meeting, feel free to go to our library. There is a LGBT bookcase, and you can see the history of the community. We had a reception last week, celebrating pioneers here in our community. We had wonderful words by my good friend, City Councilwoman Casha Williams, talking about not being in a box, not being in a box, that people in Longview should not be in a box. They shouldn't be forced to be what other people think they should be. So, I'm grateful to you, Casha, for that. It was a great speech, it moved all of us. In a nutshell, the LGBT community consists of real people. There are sons, daughters, brothers, sisters, friends, in many cases, parents. We have same-sex couples. People talk about the children. There are many same-sex couples who have children, very well-adjusted children, I might add, very good children. Okay? They are not a quote-unquote "abstract" or "other." And they should not be, then they should not be made to feel like the quote-unquote "other." We all are who we are, and we shouldn't have to apologize for that. If you really want to see what the LGBT community looks like, well, they are here for you to see tonight. They are here, they are here. What I just described is what you see tonight. And they came out because they wanted, even if they're not speaking, they want to, they want to be here in support. So, I'll do it real quick. We have our festival this weekend. I know it'll be in items of community interest as well, but we have our sheriff, Dallas County Sheriff Lupe Valdez. You know, she's not only coming to Longview, she's spending money in Longview. She's making a weekend of it. Okay? So, my point with that is that, you know, she's, she's not just coming for an hour to, she wants to see East Texas. She's impressed by the City of Longview, she's impressed by our commitment, she wants to see what we're about. She's asked us for tips on where to go, so if you have anywhere you think she should go, please let us know. And I will conclude with the final thing, is it's the Longview LGBT Pride Festival. And I emphasize this. LGBT is important, pride is important, equally as important as both is Longview, and so...
Time's up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, City Councilpeople, Mr. Mayor, as you well know, I support the decision that you made, and it showed great compassion and leadership. And I think Longview is very fortunate to have you in the, sitting in that chair. And I appreciate each and every one of you councilpeople, and glad that you're standing behind the mayor on this effort. I just wanted to say that, you know, I want to kind of reiterate something that Robert said and that Mr. English said, and that is, what is going to define us is not this proclamation. What's going to define us as a community, as a people, whether we be Christian or whatever, is how do we move forward from here? How do we get together and solve issues that are affecting our community? Are we going to let this one issue divide us? Are we going to be able to come together and overcome this, our disagreements on this issue and go forward? We have other issues in this community we need to address, the issue of retention of police officers. We have a big crime issue in this city. So what are we going to do? You're here tonight on this issue, and that's great. Are you going to be here when we need to address these other issues? And that's what, that's, that's really kind of where I'm coming from tonight, is how are we going to come together as a community and address the other issues that are facing us? Whether it's funding of the dog park, whether it's how are we going to go forward with the Paula Martin Jones things, which I think we're on our way to solving? So, let's get together as a community, let's put our, decide our differences on this particular issue. We are a great country because we can come here and we can disagree, but our greatness is not in our ability to disagree, but come together on those issues that are also important to us. So, thank you very much for your time, and thank you, Mayor, for your courage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to say three words that should make you cringe, I'll be brief. But I really mean it. Of course, I have the beeper there. Mr. Mayor, first, let me thank you and the members of the council for allowing me to address you this evening. It's my, it's a first for me. As you recall, when we saw each other the other day at the T-Bone Walker Blues Festival, that's my shameless plug for another event here in Longview, we spoke briefly about your having signed a proclamation declaring June 2015 LGBT Pride Month in Longview. I'm here tonight to publicly thank you for signing that proclamation. I think you're fulfilling your duty as the elected representative of all the citizens of Longview. It's a duty that we elected you to carry out, and I think you're doing a fine job with it so far, in the infancy of, hopefully, a long tenure. I feel that one of the most common mistakes made by elected officials at the state and national level is the mindset that because they've won an election, they somehow should abandon the charge that they've been given by virtue of their victory to represent all of their constituents. To me, this means represent, not impose their will, not interject their personal opinion on their constituents. This behavior is a failure of representative form of government to function as I see it designed. I have, as I'm sure everyone concerned has, read the proclamation, and I'm struck by the number of similarities in this document and the letter that Mayor Jay Dean wrote in June of 2014. I happened to be there when Councilwoman Williams read it. Thank you very much. She was Mayor Pro Tem. I would like to retroactively thank Mayor Dean for his representation of all the citizens in Longview at that event a year ago. In my own experience from having been seated on numerous boards and committees over the years, I know that to fairly represent those who have placed you there is both a challenge and a privilege, because it's an expression of the trust that's placed in you to represent all. It doesn't mean to give your opinion, it means you are representing those who put you there. In order to keep my time at the podium mercifully short, I want to close by again thanking Mayor Mack and the council for this work representing all of Longview. And I want to encourage you all to continue the valuable, albeit sometimes difficult, work you will be faced with in the future, representing all of us. Thank you so much.
That's all the speaker cards that I have. So I would like to conclude this by just saying, I am so thankful that we live in a country where we can all freely express our opinions. And I am glad you were all here tonight, able to come and do just that. So thank you for your attendance. We will now move on to consent agenda. Are there any items of consent agenda the council would like to move for discussion on a separate consideration? If not, may I have a motion? Move in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We're to zoning, we have a public hearing item. Planning and zoning section of the agenda. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z-15-11 filed by Walter L. Purdue requesting a rezon from two-family to single-family for lots 10 and 11, Block 2, Grekton Gardens, located at 502 and 506 West Branch Street. Angela Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, and Mr. Willard. The applicant is requesting a rezon from two-family to single-family. The applicant, the applicant is proposing to build a single-family detached dwelling between lots 10 and 11. In order to achieve this, the resident is proposing a replat, where he will subdivide the two lots, creating three lots. The property is located in the SLIP area, and the developer has applied for and been approved for the program. The SLIP area is known as, or the SLIP program is known as the South Longview Incentive Program, which exempts city fees to single-family homeowner-occupied housing, single-family owner-occupied housing in certain areas of Longview. Fees that are waived would be building permit fees, plating fees, zoning fees, water and sewer tap fees for that program. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I would be happy to answer any questions.
This item does require a public hearing. The public hearing is now open. Are there any speakers that would like to speak on this issue? If not, the public hearing is now closed. Any question in the council? Motion?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Move in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Choi, I want to just say thank you. This is the, this is the SLIP program actually working.
Yes, sir.
And we need to see that. I know the SLIP program was put into place back when I was on the council many years ago, and I'm glad to see that actually is in effect and that we are utilizing it, because I think it can make a big difference where it is intended to make a difference. And I thank you very much.
And Angela, thank you for elaborating on that program.
Yes, sir.
Like the mayor said, that's, that's an asset to our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're to action items. The next on the agenda is our action item. Consider a resolution authorizing the city manager or the city manager's designated need to establish terms and provisions pursuant to which Martin Charity Sports Complex may be used, may use the Paula Martin Jones Recreation Center. Ms. Snoddy.
Thank you, Mayor Mack. Good evening. First, I would like to congratulate Paula Martin Jones members, participants, and all citizens involved, as well as Thrive 360 for the passion they displayed to make their efforts a reality. After several meetings and productive dialogue generated by this issue, I am happy to say that it has been resolved. Plans have been to, made to develop that will allow all concerned to actively utilize the recreation center. The plans are, before you, Paula Martin Jones will allow, Thrive 360 will come in Monday through Friday, 10 to 12, and from 1:30 to 3:30. They will only utilize the pool, I think, three times during the course of the summer. So again, thank you.
Ms. Snoddy, I want to thank you for taking the lead on this item. This was one that was left for us to decipher when this new council came on board, and with the guidance of the council members that were here, I'm very pleased that this has resolved in the fashion that it has. I think we have to be very careful when we are doing things like this, because we're setting precedents. And when you set a precedence, it's difficult to go back on that. As I was unaware when this took place with the prior council, we didn't have all the information before us. And the Martin Charities are wonderful people, they do a lot of stuff for our community, we commend them, and we're glad that we're working with them. But the concerns that have grown that I was aware of were, if we, if we set precedence and we start giving away city assets and city buildings every time someone wants to come and do a, do a project, the next one will be someone that will want to use Broughton Gym, and they'll want us to give that away, or one of our parks. And we just, the precedence needs to be standard, and I think this is a great way of showing how we worked through this, collaboration, talking, getting groups together, and coming up with a solution that everybody seems to be happy with. And that's what, we should be facilitators, and I'm proud that you took the step forward, Nona, and you did a great job on this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I have, yes. And I would like, you know, David Wright is not here, he was on a previously scheduled vacation, but I have a, an email he would like me to read on this issue. Mayor Mack, I would like to thank you, Ms. Snoddy, the city staff, and Martin Charities for your work in resolving the issues concerning the use of Paula Martin Jones Recreation Center by Thrive 360. This is an issue that was passed on to us by the prior council, and I think it has been handled extremely well by the current council. I would like to state that I am in favor of the resolution authorizing the city manager as designated to establish terms and provisions pursuant to Martin Charity Sports Complex, which may use Paula Martin Jones Recreation Center. Also vote in favor of the resolution if my vote can be used. So, that's from David Wright. And so now, we need a, a motion.
I motion that we accept the resolution.
Second? All approve?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Nice job, council.
Can I make a motion to excuse Mr. Wright?
That was, please do.
I'll make a motion to excuse David Wright from our council meeting.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Pros? Mr. Wright's excused this time only. Okay. Before we get to items of community interest, which is next on our agenda, I would just like to encourage our community. We have had an incredible tragedy this week with, with the burning of the animal facility, Dr. Kimbrough. For those of y'all who don't know Dr. Kimbrough, he's a wonderful man with a wonderful heart. And, you know, for all those pet owners that lost their pets, we're praying for you. And for Dr. Kimbrough, you have to realize, he lost his patients, because those are his patients, and this has been a very difficult thing for him. So please keep them in your prayers and know that we will get through this, but the community needs to rally and support this, because this is a, this is a real tragedy. But, you know, thank you once again to our firefighters who responded and kept the damage to the minimum that it was. So, thank you for that. Okay, community interest items. Mr. Moore?
I am nothing, Mayor.
Ms. Snoddy?
Ms. Williams?
Just want to remind everybody to please attend the P-Flag Pride Event this weekend. Unfortunately, I will be away on other city business, but it will be at Heritage Plaza beginning at 5:00 PM.
Thank you. Ms. Ishihara?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Allen? I just wanted to say, looking forward very much to the next year, which will be my final year with the new personnel in the city council, new mayor. Looking forward to it.
Thank you, sir. All right. Okay, just a few things. The City of Longview is currently constructing a state-of-the-art animal shelter and adoption center. We want your input on the name of the facility. Please email your name suggestions to thenametheshelter@longviewtexas.gov. Submitted names will be considered by the Martin family, our generous naming rights donor, and the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee. Second, the Longview Public Library Summer Reading Club kickoff party will be Friday, June the 12th, from 10:00 AM until noon. For more information about the Summer Reading Club, call the Children's Department at Take a free ride with Longview Transit. Longview Transit will join other public transportation systems nationwide to participate in the 10th Annual Nation Dump the Pump Day on Thursday, June the 18th. On Dump the Pump Day, Longview Transit will offer free rides all day. I have struggled with that Dump the Pump thing since I got the email. It's just, we're renaming it next year. The Fourth of July Fireworks and Freedom Celebration is happening in less than a month. Come out to the ModCon Convention and Activity Complex for a day of family fun, music, and entertainment. At 8:00 PM, Dubra McClinton will take the stage for a free outdoor concert followed by the largest firework display in East Texas. And finally, I just want to say, for those of you that attended the T-Bone Walker Festival this weekend, what a wonderful thing for Longview. And what I really want to say is, thank you to those volunteers that were out there all day long and all night to make that such a successful event. That requires a lot of volunteerism, a lot of support, and I'm thoroughly impressed with the, the numbers and the attitude and the demeanor with which we put that on, and I commend those involved, all the staff that was involved. Y'all did a great job. I'm looking forward to next year. This is something we need to grow and build on, but good job, community, great job. Okay, Mr. Willard, I haven't forgotten about you, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council, and Dump the Pump is not a proclamation, by the way. I don't know what it probably called. Mayor and Council, I wanted to tell you some information that I didn't think, I dreaded for this day to come, but Chief Dingler, Don Dingler, who has been with the Longview Police Department 42 years, I think, he and I have been talking recently over several occasions and talking about his intention to retire one of these days. And so my bittersweet announcement tonight is that today he presented me a letter announcing his intentions to retire from the Longview Police Department, and that retirement will be effective at the end of July of this year. And I just want to say a couple of things. We're going to have plenty of time to recognize and honor Chief Dingler for all that he's done for the City of Longview. And I just want to say, you know, he's become a real friend to me as a coworker as well, and I have the utmost respect for Don Dingler and his, the kind of man that he is, and Longview has been very fortunate to have Don Dingler as our chief of police. And we'll have plenty of time to get into all that with a reception for the community to come by and wish him well. But Chief Dingler, you know how much I respect you and appreciate all you've done for the City of Longview, and I'll miss you personally as... all you've done for the City of Longview, and I'll miss you personally as well, and I'll be the oldest guy around the table back there with the staff now. I don't, Chief Dingler won't be able to help me out and defend myself with the other staff members, so I appreciate that also. Also, I do want to announce that effective August 1, I'm going to appoint Mike Bishop, who is an assistant chief with the Longview Police Department, as the interim chief of police. Chief Bishop is back in the back, and chief will be the interim chief beginning August 1. And I wanted to say, I'll have more to say about Chief Bishop later, but Mike Bishop, I have a lot of respect and trust in him completely, and I know you all will as well, that he will do a wonderful job as the interim, and so Chief Bishop will take over then on August 1. So thank you.
Chief Bishop, we'll miss you, but we sure appreciate your service to our community. What an invaluable asset you've been to us for so, so many years, and we will continue to ask for your counsel and guidance along the way. Okay? Thank you so much. We will now convene into an executive session for consultation with attorney under the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071. We will not reconvene after the executive session is completed. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you for being here.